... by the Committee on Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary is hereby convened. On the agenda today, we do have several pieces of legislation. The first item is Bill Number 111-33, which is relative to the assignment of police officers; Bill Number 123-33, relative to expanding the powers of the magistrate judge; Bill Number 124-33, relative to authorizing the expenditure of funds from the Judicial Client Services Fund to support language assistance services at the judiciary of Guam; Bill Number 125-33, which is relative to advancing compliance with the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission by designating probation officers of the Superior Court of Guam as uniformed officers and by adding the chief of probation to the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission. And then finally, we will conclude today's public hearing with Bill Number 126-33, relative to authorizing government Guam employees to join the volunteer deputy marshal reserve program. For the information of the public, the initial notices were disseminated electronically on Sunday, June 14, with the first notice of public hearing, and then subsequently on Monday, June 15, the notices went out also to the senators, as well as some additional stakeholders. The second notice of public hearing for this particular public hearing was disseminated to the community and to the stakeholders on Wednesday, June 17, and then likely, and also on June 18, disseminated to all the senators. I want to, on a personal note, as chairman of the committee, thank our media partners for assisting in this process and ensuring that the community is aware of some of the pieces of legislation that will be entertained this morning. So, thank you very much to our media partners. As we proceed with the first item, I'd like to recognize and thank the senators who have joined us this morning thus far. To the senator to my immediate left, to Senator Tina Muni-Barnes, thank you very much, Senator, for joining us. To her immediate left, to Senator Mary Camacho-Torres, and to my right, to Senator Tony Ada. Thank you, senators, for joining us in this public hearing this morning. The first piece of legislation, like I mentioned a little earlier, that will be discussed is Bill Number 111, introduced by Senator Tina Barnes. And relative to the assignment of police officers, I would like to yield to the sponsor of that legislation to provide some of her descriptive comments with regards to that legislation. And in the meantime, if I can invite Mr. Mike Duñez, the executive director for Gura, to join us up front. Senator Barnes?
Si, Jesus, Monsi, and Mr. Chair, Manana, si, Jesus, to everyone here, many of God's blessings. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on Bill 111-33 LS. It is an act to amend Section 77119 to Chapter 77, Title 10 of the Guam Code annotated, relative to the assignment of police officers. Mr. Chair, working as oversight chair of housing and working closely with Gura, it was requested that this bill be introduced so that they would, Gura would be able to enter into an MOU with the Guam Police Department to implement a pilot project program that the two agencies had been working on for quite some time. I want to share with you, Mr. Chair, and to my colleagues, to the audience listening, that Bill 111-33 will allow the chief of police to be able to provide his officers or civilian police reservists who otherwise qualify to be able to reside in one of the four asset managed properties, which the acronym is called the different amps, that have been identified for this pilot project. Mr. Chair, we know that crimes, though we don't want to admit, crimes have been on the rise on the island, and Gura's amps have been affected, just like all other neighborhoods on our island. And this program, when implemented, would provide for a police presence in the various amps and will serve as a deterrent to crime. I want to say that people are less likely to commit crimes if they know a police officer is living in the area. I want to share with you, Mr. Chair, that similar programs have been very, very successful in communities in the various states, and this bill will allow for it to become a reality here in Guam. And again, I want to say, I know that Gura and the Guam Police Department have been working on this for quite some time now, and it's just trying to get this MOU effectuated and the two agencies coming together, and I think that this would be a plus for the community. So, I hope that my colleagues support this bill. Si, Jesus, Monsi.
Thank you very much, Senator Muni-Barnes. And I'd like to also welcome Senator Tom Ada, vice chair of the committee. Thank you very much, Senator, for joining us this morning.
Just to note this.
For the record.
For the record. Mr. Chair, at the recommendation of legal counsel, it was noted that a correction could be included, or an inclusion to the heading, the introduction of the bill, to delete, to an add off, and then to add to the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority through a housing security services system, so it would further explain the reason for the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you again, Senator. Mr. Duñez, if you can just identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Mrs. Chairman. My name is Michael Duñez. I am the executive director for the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority. I have prepared a short testimony in support of Bill 111, and I want to just condense my testimony by saying, we support the introduction of Bill 111. It will provide the framework for us to continue our discussions with the Guam Police Department. There are a number of issues that were raised over the last year in our discussions with them, and I believe the Bill 111 will address some of those issues by basically saying, it is part of the GPD's mission. We do intend to continue our discussions with GPD. Again, we recognize that whatever we come up with has to fit in with their overall mission and their priorities, and their position on community policing and neighborhood patrol programs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duñez. Senator Muni-Barnes, do you have any follow-on questions?
Thank you.
Senators? Senator Ada?
In the bill, it refers to some kind of memorandum of understanding between GPD and Gura, and that's about the extent of the reference it made. But just in reading the bill, you know, I guess I would want to know a little bit more. Is this, if GPD decides to assign an officer to Gura subdivision in Mong Mong, is that officer to stay within the boundaries of that subdivision? Or is he gonna, you know, how's this gonna work?
We're still at the discussion stages with the MOU, but our intent, basically, and our desire is not to put additional demands on the police department. What we're basically asking them to do is to work with us to have a police officer living in our neighborhoods, and we are now trying to define the role of that police officer in relation to our housing development, but also in relation to the daily operations of GPD. We would have to defer to GPD on how they best see the use of the police officer, but we're not looking at the police officer in the neighborhood as something in lieu of regular patrols that they would do throughout the community.
And there was something in there as an incentive about having a housing unit available for that police officer to live in, maybe at reduced rent or something like that, as an incentive for a police officer to want to maybe volunteer for that?
That's correct. What will happen is we would have to, we would be taking a unit offline, so to speak, and that is that it will not be included in the calculation of rent subsidies, operating subsidies that we receive from HUD. But in exchange, we would be asking the police officer to do certain things, and that's also something that we're still negotiating with the police department.
And so, right now, it seems quite nebulous, because from what you've just said, this officer is gonna go out and do his regular patrol out in the community wherever he's assigned, and then, I guess, in the evening, when he's off duty, he goes to that housing unit where he basically is supposed to rest, and, but there's gonna be some kind of commitment on his part that when at 2:00 in the morning, you know, something erupts in the neighborhood, he's the one to get out of bed to go and quell the...
No, no. Basically, he would, he would do what he would normally do as an off-duty officer, and that is call-in situation, decide, he would have to make the decision whether or not it's safe for him to proceed, or should he wait for other officers to arrive?
But now, in your reading of the bill, it's really totally permissive, right? GPD may assign?
That's correct.
And up to this point, we really don't know what's gonna be the requirement placed on that police officer, because that memorandum of agreement has not yet been finalized. So, we don't know if he's the guy that's gonna get up, you know, at 2:00 in the morning to go respond to disturbance in that neighborhood. And so, and based on that, do you think maybe Bill 111 is somewhat premature?
No. What we are hitting, part of the problem we're having with the negotiations for an MOU, are things like, where does workers' comp come in? What happens if he's injured? We're not saying he's gonna be an active-duty police officer within our premises only. We're basically asking the police department to work with a police officer who will be living in our neighborhoods. We will be asking that officer to do certain things, perhaps, such as helping to organize and train the neighborhood police watch program, a neighborhood watch program, organizing or acting as a liaison between us, between Gura and the police department in terms of being able to collect incident reports pertaining to our neighborhoods, not be actively patrolling.
Somehow, there's a profile or a description that's been kind of painted about the Gura subdivisions, that there's a high rate of crime in there, and it seems that one way to respond to that is, you know, this agreement with GPD to assign a police officer. Why doesn't Gura just go hire G4S?
Basically, it's a budget issue.
Yeah, because there's also this big subdivision, for example, called Baragota Village. I'm sure they would like to have a GPD officer assigned there and, you know, and basically kind of dedicate it to that.
Again, we're not asking GPD to assign a police officer and then leave everything up to that police officer for any cause pertaining to our developments. We're basically asking GPD to work with Gura and a police officer who may be interested in what we have to offer, and to work with us to ensure that GPD will recognize the police officer does have a presence in that neighborhood, and to act as a liaison, so to speak, between the housing authority and GPD. Right now, we get the police blotter on a daily basis, and we scan through it, and we look for incidents where the address falls under one of our developments. Our neighborhoods are as safe as the surrounding neighborhoods. If there are problems in the larger neighborhoods, there will be problems in our specific development. One of the things that I've seen over the last five years is that as the Zonia Village was able to implement their neighborhood watch program, we saw a corresponding reduction in the number of incidents in our neighborhoods in Zonia.
One final question, and it was mentioned that this program, I guess, has been implemented across the nation.
It's something that was developed about 20 years ago, Officer in the Neighborhood Program. Basically, HUD gave housing authorities across the country some leeway in looking at ways to address crime in their developments. There is no one program. The programs range from anything from just somebody living in the neighborhood, a police officer living in the neighborhood, to a police officer with very specific duties with respect to that neighborhood. So, what we're basically looking at is, how can we work with GPD, recognizing they do have resource limitations as well, but we also want to see something that can work and work within their own standard operating procedures, so that the lines of communication is there and open, and that we have a better understanding of how GPD can respond to things. One of our largest developments is Total Gardens. There are 118 dwelling units in there, and there's only one way in and out of Total Gardens, which has its pros and cons, but one of the biggest issues we have are young kids, juveniles, staying out late and basically just gathering and being basically a nuisance. But there's a lot of criminal mischief reports, vehicles being damaged, that's the, those are the sort of things that are happening in Total Gardens. But on the whole, it's as safe as the neighborhoods around them. When we do press to get more information, we get reports that, you know, someone's child was doing this, and the parents say, it's somebody from outside the neighborhood. What we're trying to do is look at ways to address that issue in the evening hours.
Is there a draft copy of this MOA there that we can take a look at?
There is. I can present the latest draft to the committee.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. I'd like to also welcome Vice Speaker Cruz. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker, for joining us this morning. Just a follow-on question to some of the inquiries that Senator Ada had just posed, because you mentioned about the Neighborhood Watch Program that was recently implemented or a few years back in Zonia, and that proved to be successful. And this is a different approach in terms of making sure that the community that you oversee continues to be maintained, and that public safety is part of, a parcel of, that environment. But then, have you applied the Neighborhood Watch Program to Total Gardens that you mentioned a little earlier, or any of your other neighborhoods?
We are, we've had Neighborhood Watch Programs years ago, when we had an active resident association program. That's one of the other things we're looking at, is to resurrect a resident association program, so that a resident association, so that we could then work with the residents in an organized manner, and look at ways to enhance and improve their living conditions.
I only bring that up because, in this particular case, Baragota is taking the lead. From my perspective, based on my discussion with the mayor of Baragota and the vice mayor, they're now looking at establishing a third and a fourth Neighborhood Watch Program within Baragota, and they've highlighted much of the successes that they've realized since establishing the first two. So, I think that that approach also could be taken, rather than foregoing a unit and foregoing those revenues, perhaps some of those resources can be applied towards establishing a similar program that would be just as successful. So, obviously, you've explored all the options, and now you're looking at getting, physically getting, a law enforcement officer stationed there. My question is, only because we're surrounded by probation officers in the house, and perhaps a few marshals, I don't know if you'd like to extend the opportunity, and that's venturing to the judiciary of Guam, so the chief justice has to concur, but, you know, perhaps apply it to law enforcement rather than just GPD. So, that's another train of thought that perhaps you may want to consider with regards to the legislation, because you have a much larger pool of people, resources, who are just as knowledgeable and just as well-trained as our GPD officers, men and women. So, there's just a thought, but aside from that, Mr. Vice Speaker, any questions? Senator Torres?
Mr. Duñez, I just wanted to clarify, get some clarification on the units. Do you have four management properties?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We have, Senator, we have 750 housing units across the island. They are organized in four regional offices, and we call asset management programs our properties.
Are they, are they equal, though, in the number of units, more or less?
No.
One property to the next?
The largest has 235 properties that consist of Amp Four, which is Total Gardens, and the developments in Dedado.
And then, what are the smaller-sized units?
The smaller sizes, there's 156 units. It's referred to as Amp One. Those are the developments in Mong Mong, the Ganya Heights in Sanahania, and Assun.
Okay. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. Any final comments, Mr. Duñez? If not, this concludes this discussion on Bill Number 111-33, and the committee will continue to receive written testimony subsequent to this date for the next 10 days, and then we will conclude by closing the committee report. So, Mr. Duñez, thank you again for your testimonies this morning. We will now proceed to Bill Number 123-33, relative to expanding the powers of the magistrate judge, and if I can invite the chief justice to please join us. Mr. Joshua Tenorio, Savina Charfris, Tricia Suzuki, Marissa Cruz, Doris Mahnus, and Anthony Tovis. Many of you have just signed in to show your support, and we're good on that, okay? You don't need to join the chief justice, because I'm sure he speaks on behalf of the entire judiciary. Mr. Chief Justice, please, if you can identify yourself and proceed.
Hafedeh, I'm Chief Justice Robert Torres. With me is our clerk of court, Danielle Rosetti, and Josh Tenorio, our administrator of the courts. We have a number of bills on the public hearing agenda today that deal with the judiciary, and our administrator of the courts will provide testimony on most of those bills, but I did want to, of course, come and show support for the four bills, and specifically talk about the expansion of the duties of the magistrate judge. As you know, in my State of the Judiciary address, I talked about the component to obtain a funding for a new magistrate judge, the position already being authorized by law but having no funding to fill it. And then, this Bill 122-33 represents a second component of the addressing our needs, and that's to expand the authority of the magistrate judge to perform additional procedural and preliminary matters. We've recognized, particularly with the increase in the therapeutic courts and specialty court dockets, the increased supervision and attention that's required from our judges, and we are confident that this legislation will help reduce some of that strain by providing the magistrate with additional authority to preside over those preliminary and procedural matters. In criminal cases, Bill 123-33 is going to authorize a magistrate to do preliminary hearings, rule on procedural and discovery case motions, and conduct criminal trial settings. All of those powers are already contained within the Federal Magistrate Act and what the federal magistrate is permitted to do. With regards to civil cases, the magistrate judge will handle discovery disputes, do initial scheduling conferences, pre-trial conferences, and also settlement proceedings. Again, those are all very similar duties to what are already contained within the Federal Magistrate Bill. And finally, what we want is, with the consent of the parties and upon special designation by the chief justice, allow the magistrate to conduct non-jury civil trials and criminal misdemeanor trials. Again, that is also language that we picked up, looking at from the federal magistrate provision. We recognize the time standards that our judges are under, and we've been very conscientious and pushing to get those cases done within the time standards that have been adopted. And I think that if Bill 123-33 is enacted, it definitely will give us the opportunity, even with the cases that are coming forward and the increased time and effort that's required of our specialty courts, give the authority and enable the judges to be able to move their dockets and allow the magistrate and the additional magistrate that we're asking for funding with this, with our budget submission to the legislature, which our hearing will be on Wednesday. And I think that by giving these new powers to the magistrate, we think it's the best use of resources that can be given to us, as opposed to looking at another full-time judge on the bench. So, we ask the legislature to wholeheartedly support the Bill 123-33, which expands the duties and powers of the magistrate judge by amending Article IV of Chapter 4, Title 7.
Thank you very much, Chief Justice Torres.
Good morning, Chairman, again, and members of the committee. I just wanted to add on a couple of things to set the context for this. Magistrate judges are appointed for a term of four years, and the current one, Judge Tolentino, has been reappointed under the statute that was amended several terms ago. If the judicial council unanimously recommends a retention, then the judge will be able to sit for a second and final four years. And that, he's halfway into the second term, he has two more years left, and he would not be subject to reappointment. And I mention that because we're having a, there is a study going on, taking a look in the big picture and analyzing the caseloads, and taking a look at the time to disposition, seeing what the changes in how charges are being made criminally. For example, we're seeing more, an increase in Class A felonies being charged under this new attorney general than misdemeanor cases, and trying to analyze that time. And there has been some critique from the private bar that because of the time standards on the criminal cases, there are time standards for civil, but they're a year and a half as opposed to one year for the felonies, that there is somewhat of a slowdown in the civil docket. And I think this initiative is to help address what we're seeing, but reserve a final decision to the legislature upon the judiciary's report analyzing these cases, and perhaps, in the future, when the second magistrate term expires, the court will face a decision whether or not to just go ahead and look for a new candidate pursuant to the law, send them down for confirmation, or, at that time, make a report with the judicial council, the chief justice certifying that there may be a need to have an eighth trial court judge. I don't think that we are there yet to make that kind of recommendation to the legislature, but I do see this additional magistrate position, which we have included in our budget request as a way to really be responsive to the practitioners out there, especially on the civil side, but really to get a lot of these cases and the time to disposition close to the time standard that the Supreme Court has adopted.
And one other thing with the magistrate judges, although the process for appointment of the magistrate judge is through the three names recommended by the Guam Bar Association after a search, and then the chief justice appointment, it is subject to legislative confirmation.
Thank you very much, Chief Justice, Mr. Tenorio. Any other comments, senators? Vice Speaker Cruz?
I guess both of you anticipated my questions. Senator Ada was asking me those questions, and I was telling him there's four years confirmation with, by the chief justice, and confirmed by the legislature.
Telepathy.
You could feel it. And I want to thank you both for being fiscally responsible about not asking for an eighth judge yet, and to have an opportunity for this program to move forward, to see whether or not, one, we can have new candidates for the magistrates, but maybe even if there is a recommendation for the eighth judge, that there will be somebody that's had extensive experience by that time, eight years. This last week, one of the other senators and I had lunch with a constituent that was very concerned about the delay in the, yeah, well, delay especially in the civil. And so, I'm really happy that you're addressing this, and I'm hoping that that constituent is watching, knowing that this is, that you're all, we are all trying to figure out a way to resolve this issue. And so, I'm glad that you're talking about getting a second magistrate on and having that person devoted to the civil calendar. And I also just wanted to commend the court for, I mean, all the therapeutic work that you're doing, and I understand, Joshua is bawled because of the fact that I'm constantly screaming at him about the time standards, and there isn't a day that the poor thing doesn't suffer a phone call from me about what happened to this and what happened to that. And so, I'm happy that you're addressing that, but can you just expand on the duties that you're hoping that this new person would be doing, and so that my colleagues understand how important this new person's going to be?
The, go ahead, Josh. The, go ahead Josh.
Maybe, now the Clerk of Court.
I'll just highlight, at least as an example for civil cases, currently the magistrate judge is assigned-
Ms. Rosetti, I'm sorry, just identify yourself on the record.
Danielle Rosetti, Clerk of Court for the Superior Court. Our current magistrate is assigned to handle civil matters that are filed before the Superior Court, but as, according to the current statute, he only handles post judgment. So, our intent is that if this new legislation is passed, a lot of the pretrial, non-dispositive motions that come in, for example, motions for discovery, perhaps there's procedural motions for attorney's fees that kind of are not, you know, the trial judges have to hear, but because of either their specialty court dockets and the time that it takes for them to preside over those matters, along with the increased number of criminal jury trials that we are experiencing, those hearings are delayed, you know, they're pushed because if a defendant asserts his right to speedy trial. If you had a discovery motion that was supposed to be heard today, your hearing would be moved and, you know, the criminal cases are taking precedent as we are seeing at the Superior Court. One of the other things we are hoping to try and add, an additional duty, is to have the magistrate judge preside over unlawful detainer matters. Those are currently assigned to the trial court judges as they come in when they're filed, but really the procedural part of it is just someone coming in wanting to remove the person from the premises. And as it is now, the trial judges are assigned to that and it's by statute, we set a hearing within five days and so the hearing has to happen. It's not one of those that you push. So, if we had a procedure where we just assigned all unlawful detainer cases to the magistrate, we would already know at the onset where it would be assigned to and then it would be resolved in a more timely manner, I think is what we're really looking for.
Mr. Vice Speaker, you mentioned about, you know, trying to be responsive to the business community and the delay in civil cases because of the assertion of speedy trial by criminal defendants and by law, they have to take precedence. We actually, as I mentioned in the State of the Judiciary, we have formed a committee to examine the establishment of a business court, a specialized business court to help address some of those issues involving the business community. And as Josh said, it was premature, we felt, to come in and argue for the establishment or creation of an additional judge until we better understood how the caseload was coming in, what the delay was, and we worked with the magistrate at first, which we thought was a more cost-effective way in which to approach this issue and at the same time evaluate the business docket, look at the need for establishment. And that committee is being chaired by Justice Merriman and the members have been appointed and that committee is actively looking at the establishment of that specialized docket to be responsive to the business community's concerns with the delay that is resulting from the assertion of criminal speedy trial issues.
And just so that it's clear that we're not creating a new wheel or some strange thing, right now on Guam, though we refer to him as Judge Manibusen, he really is the magistrate of the district court.
Correct.
And the duties that you described under the federal rules, he's currently executing those responsibilities to assist Chief Judge Tidinko Gatewood in her responsibilities. And all we're doing in this legislation is to establish that same kind of authority and power in the Superior Court of Guam that currently exists with a magistrate that sits at the federal district court.
There's nothing really novel with regards to the expansion of the duties compared to what's gone on with the federal magistrate.
And he currently does quite a bit of the civil stuff for Chief Judge Tidinko Gatewood. And so, that's what you're hoping to establish at the Superior Court here to assist the judges that are going through trials constantly. I mean, I see that all the time.
And also the specialty dockets, the mental health court and the veterans court both take a significant amount of time and effort, as does the family violence court because of the therapeutic approach and the manner in which it's done. So, it's a bit more time sense, you know, intensive for our judges. And this, by allowing the magistrate to do these preliminary and procedural matters, then the judges don't have to devote their time and resources to getting that done and it will be a much more efficient and effective operation.
They weren't established when I was there, but the juvenile court was very time-intensive. And so, I understand that these new therapeutic courts are going to be time-intensive and the judges are going to be very busy. So, I'm hoping that my colleagues understand this is not a novel idea. Magistrate Joaquin Manibusen is doing this at the district court here. You're using the very same powers and expanding it, I mean, bringing it over to the Superior Court in local statute and it'll be just assisting. And again, I thank you, commend the court for the way that you're moving your trials. I mean, the criminal trials are moving and I'm happy to see that, but we are getting concerns about the civil docket and so I'm glad that this is going to try to address that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Torres?
I certainly understand the piece of legislation and I think that it's a very good measure going forward, but I was, my question has to do with logistics. Do you foresee with an increased capacity now with the magistrate judge, do you foresee any problems accommodating additional traffic or calendaring with your present facility or with the use of the Northern Court Satellite? Is there, are there any concerns that we should be aware of?
We are actually planning that right now. We're, you know, I think in the State of Judiciary, they talked about it in the beginning, there were five trial courtrooms at the Superior Court or the Guam Judicial Center and it went to seven and now we have 10, including this small traffic room. So, part of it is management and that will only help us to a certain extent. We've been talking with our Chairman about some of our plans. I think that one of the big plans that we're looking at is converting our MIS server room and section, which is in, which is actually on the first floor. And all of their area encompasses a courtroom and chambers that the trial court judges have. It's exactly the same amount of space. It also would allow us to connect that to the prisoner holding areas. And to do that, you know, we do have about three offices that we're thinking about pushing out of the building because it is, space is quite tight. And I think that there might be some opportunities for us to look at that. We've been talking with our Oversight Chair and the Chair of Appropriations about an opportunity that we may have to fund some of that if we're able to draw down the balance of, you know, some loan authorization that we've had six years ago that we may need to try and draw upon to get some resources. But we're looking at some language. I expect to, you know, to ask Chairman Noggin to introduce something that will allow us to look at that. But that is a big issue, including DEDDO. You know, we're at the end of a lease period, we're current, there's another lease period or two more lease periods to go up there, but we need to do some improvements. You couldn't have a trial, a criminal trial court up there because there's sound barrier issues between the jury room and the trial room. It wasn't really designed at that time to be a trial courtroom. And I think, you know, we're looking at that and also expanding the kind of services we have at the north to mitigate what's happening down here in Agania. Because you're right, it is, space is hard to come by and there's some issues.
And at present, the, your maximum lease period is five years for, like with the Northern Court Satellite?
Actually, yes, and then you can have options. And so, we did do the five. We're on, I think, a second option, but the maximum amount of time, there wasn't anything more than another five that was contemplated for a full, you know, to have as a period, of course. But yeah, we're about seven into it and there's been some investment up there, so I mean...
Yeah, that was my point. You know, you want to invest in permanent structures as opposed to-
You know, I was trying to, I had a meeting with Mayor Savaris and our team a couple months ago and I was telling her I was even looking at, you know, the old mayor's office to try and look for additional space so we can have some more treatment and supervision services up there. And the first thing she asked me, she said, "You're not telling me that you're going to close the court." I said, "Well, no, not right now." She said, "But I'm going to protest." I said, "Well, I'm not looking for..." You know, she said it really is, she sees the court, even though she said that she loses it to Jigo, at least it's up there and it's placed somewhere that people can have some public transportation options to get to. But she said it's been a good part of that community. We believe, we agree also.
And the numbers and the usage of the Northern Court Satellite just show just how important it is for the community and the way it's being utilized. It only has room for one magistrate up there, the other magistrate will have to come to Agania. We're looking at, you know, as we said, options to create the space to allow that magistrate. And it's going to take some time, obviously, the selection process for the magistrate, then the confirmation process, but we expect that, you know, we can work in tandem to try to identify and get him hitting the ground running once the legislature confirms whoever the candidate is, if they have passed the bill and give us the funding for the expansion of the duties and the funding of the additional position.
Thank you Senator Torres and Chief Justice Torres. Any other questions on Bill 123? If not, because you're all signed in for the additional legislation, Bill Number 124, we will now transition over to that piece of legislation. And it's relative to authorizing the expenditure funds from the Judicial Client Services Fund to support language assistance services at the judiciary of Guam.
Thank you Chairman Noggin and members of the committee. Bill 124 is basically an opportunity for us to fund language assistance services from the Judicial Client Services Fund. It's a fund that receives about half of all the fines and fees that come into the court and really it's been restricted to funding the gaps in indigent defense and all of the services with detention. The reason why it's so important to add language assistance services is something that is happening throughout the country where basically the U.S. Department of Justice has chosen the courts as the first government entity within the entire system to go after compliance with, is it Title Four of the, Title Six of the Civil Rights Act? The state of Hawaii just came out actually from an investigation and made some changes. States of California, Arizona, and New Mexico have been sued by the federal government, the court systems, for not providing language assistance services. And although we're in full compliance when it comes to the criminal docket, there are instances where our residents who are, have limited English proficiency are coming in through the courts on the civil side. And currently, you know, we use whoever's in-house to try and deal with the need, but it's really not been a sustainable thing. It is something I think that we need to provide and also protect the court, make sure that we have another tool so that we comply with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act and make sure that we provide the services to the residents who have limited English proficiency. So, what this would do, it would provide us with accessing a resource we already have but to pay for this kind of service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenorio. Any questions in regards to this piece of legislation? Chief Justice Torres, any final comments? If not, Bill Number 124-33 has been publicly heard and like previous legislation, the committee will continue to receive written testimony for the next subsequent 10 days and then we'll be closing out the committee report. We will proceed to Bill Number 125-33, which is relative to advancing compliance with the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission by designating probation officers of the Superior Court of Guam as unified, uniformed officers and by adding the Chief of Probation to the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission. The committee would like to recognize that we have an extensive list of individuals who have signed up and I want to thank everyone for signing up. I understand that not all of you would like to provide oral testimony, so I do also recognize that. So, if any of you would like to provide oral testimony before the committee today, then I invite you up to the front. But aside from that, Chief Justice Torres and Mr. Tenorio, as well as Chief Lizama, you can open up the comments. Chief Justice?
No, I'm, you know, I, obviously you can tell by the attendance here today of our probation officers of the importance of this bill and it is very important, you know, particularly with regards to the compliance with the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission and our probation officers being active in that and compliance with that. And they've worked just as hard as our other law enforcement division, our marshal service in terms of ensuring compliance with the post requirements that have been set forth by the legislature. And this bill would designate them as uniform officers and also add our Chief of Police to the Post Commission, yeah, I mean, Chief of Probation, I'm sorry, to the Post Commission. I mean, their needs and concerns are a little bit different than the marshals, different than the probation officers or the Department of Corrections officers. And I think he's probably the best to address those specifics with it. So, I'll turn it over to our Chief Probation Officer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is John Lizama. I am the Chief Probation Officer for Probation Services Division, judiciary of Guam. I come before you with my probation officers behind me in full support of Bill 125-33, which would recognize probation officers as uniform personnel as defined in Chapter Eight, Section 8104. Most recently, over the last couple of years, several bills and legislations have been introduced and passed. And the Peace Officer Standards of Training, or the Post Bill which was passed into law, lists probation officers under Category One, same category as police officers, firefighters, Department of Corrections officers, custom and quarantine officers, marshals of the Superior Court, judiciary of Guam. We are required to undergo the same training and meet the same minimum standards academically, physically, as all other Category One law enforcement officers. Yet, as probation officers, we are not included under the Uniform Retirement Plan. Going back several years, and Vice Speaker can attest, when I first came in, probation officers did not wear a uniform. We were out in the streets doing our field supervision in whatever clothes we wore to work that day. And one of the dangers of not having a uniform is our safety. And one of the things we did was, when we first took over, and when I first took over back in 2011, is to establish a uniform directive, directing all probation officers to wear a standard uniform to conduct field work. Field work which includes home searches, home visits, the execution of warrants of arrest, and orders for search, apprehension, and detention of minors out in the field. Around that same time, we looked at what funding was available. We did not have any local funding, so we used whatever funding we could obtain through our resources to procure polo shirts with badges in the front, patches on the side. And we went to the Chief Justice and we asked for authorization and permission to use these polo shirts in the conduct of our field operations. We, at that time, we were only able to get each probation officer one. But the probation officers that are behind me, each of them on their own has purchased additional shirts because they recognize and they see the importance of wearing a uniform out in the field for their safety, for the identification of probation officers out in the field. We did not buy them pants, we did not buy them belts, we did not buy them boots. My staff, our staff behind us, did that on their own. And they continued to purchase the uniforms on their own. And with that said, they've even increased the number of times they wear the uniform. It's not just wearing the uniform out in the field, but it's wearing it at work when they're not assigned court. We have a standard requirement that anybody that has to go to court, wear a tie, look professional in the courtroom, as we've always done. But anything outside of the court where it's being, working in the office or conducting field work, the probation officers have the dedication, the loyalty, and the understanding that it's important for us to wear a uniform. Then we had the passing of the Castle Doctrine Bill. And with that, that further enhances our need for safety, our need to be identified in the community. And with that said, we've looked at and we found additional fundings and we're getting our probation officers additional shirts. And this time, we're actually getting them pants. We've actually outfitted our probation officers with expandable batons, pepper spray, and other law enforcement equipment that is- that is needed out in the field. But it's because of what we saw as a need as management to ensure their safety, and the probation officers recognizing that it's important for their safety, they've done this on their own. So that is why we are all in support of this bill to include us into the Uniform Retirement Plan, because we are part of the Peace Officer Standards of Training Category One. We're in the same category as all other law enforcement officers that wear a uniform. We've identified a uniform, we've looked and procured uniforms, and we will continue to wear uniforms. And that's why we ask for your support to include probation officers under the Uniform Retirement Plan. The second point, and the other reason why I'm here, is to include the chief probation officer position as part of the post commission. If you look at the academic requirements on the post bill or the post commission, it's basically outlined, they need this requirement, they need to attend this class. But probation officers are actually required to have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice or related field. And now they have to meet the post standards. So academically, their standards are higher than our brothers and sisters in blue, be it the Guam Police Department or the other agencies. So our entry-level probation officers and those that are graduating from the University of Guam next year, they have to have a bachelor's, and now they have to be post-certified in order for us to pick them up as probation officer ones. So with that said, one of the things we want to do is to make sure that the Peace Officer Standards of Training, the post commission, understands and knows what are the requirements for probation officers, aside from a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. With juvenile justice reform and the consultants from the Robert F. Kennedy Foundation, as well as our participation in the American Probation and Pro Association, we've identified additional training requirements for each of our probation officers, be it a juvenile probation officer or probation officer assigned to adult pre-trial services or adult probation. And those trainings are critical in order for probation officers to be efficient and proficient in doing their jobs. We have a huge responsibility. We conduct a pre-sentence investigation report, and we need to have the proper skill set, motivational interviewing. Certainly, our writing skills have to be up to par, because what we do is we recommend to the sentencing judge, we make a recommendation as to whether or not defendant is going to go to the Department of Corrections, or whether or not he's going to be released into the community. So certainly, our skill set needs to be higher than that, higher. And that's why I think it's important for the chief probation officers to be part of the commission, to develop the curriculum that's required under our guidance in order for our probation officers to be proficient and efficient in what they do, and to make the proper recommendations to the judges of the Superior Court of Guam. And for that, I'm here to support the bill. I ask you for your support of this bill for the officers behind me and for future probation officers by including them into the Uniform Retirement Plan, and for including the chief probation officer position into the post commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief Lizama. Just for the information of Chief Justice Torres and the three of you, I'd like to see if by any chance we can get written testimony from the retirement fund, because there's approximately 15 to 17 individuals or probation officers that would be directly, would have a direct impact on the defined benefits plan. And that has always been the concern from the retirement fund. My preliminary discussions with them is because the number is not that large, that certainly, an initiative like this would be supported by them. But we will pursue written testimony. They will provide a notification of this particular public hearing, but we'll see if we can get some written testimony on this. Senators, any, or Josh?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so there's, just to summarize, there's three things that this bill will do. The first one, by including probation officers in the definition of uniform personnel, it will recognize them as uniform officers and in the future, make them eligible to receive a uniform allowance once the formal processes developed to adopt. Actually, we're looking at, in addition to this, we really want a Class A uniform for them. I think you saw all of them recently, unfortunately, at the funeral of their brother, probation officer Jason Munya. And I hate to say this, but the presiding judge told me, goes, you know, you need to come up with a dress uniform, because every, we went to, I think many of you went to the SET graduation, you saw the first integrated law enforcement class, and here is everybody in their classes, and then the probation officers come in with this polo shirt and cargo pants. And he said to me, and I hate to say, he said, you know, they look like they're going to go and pick up the pugua, while the rest of them are going to go to, you know, show their finest to the top of the officials. And he kind of said it in a joke, but he goes, you know, in terms of recognizing their professionalism, because as John said, the entry-level position for probation officer requires a bachelor's degree. None of the law enforcement entry-level positions require that. They do if you're going to get promoted for management positions. But as an entry level, already, there's a professional requirement of them to be proficient in all these areas. So the definite, that would, they'll do that. And the second one, of course, will be for these 15 to 17 DB members, it will allow them to, if they choose to retire under the age of 60 and over the age of 55, it will waive the penalty, the age penalty for them. Right now, the marshals, the police officers, the customs officers, all are included in that statute. And I think as we get to the mandatory test for, in December 16th, for post-compliance, and that year to comply if you don't meet it, I think giving the longstanding officers an opportunity, if they want to, to leave service, consistent with the brothers and sisters in the other departments, and except not penalize them, like the others would get that penalty waived. And then just related, of course, adding the chief of probation to the post commission, I think gives the post commission big-picture analysis to make sure that they're considering the needs of this group. There are 67 probation officers. It's not as large as the police department, but it's certainly more than the port police or some of the other agencies that already have voting memberships on the commission. I just think that it will help with the big picture, make sure that there's context in when standards or policies are approved by the post commission, that make sure that this group of employees, which require a higher, require the degree for entry level, I think would be a good thing to add.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenorio. And, Mr. Chief Justice, thank you for allowing the probation officers to be able to appear here before the committee, and so that the committee members can actually recognize their presence in the audience. So really appreciate that.
You're welcome. It's a very important piece of legislation for them, and they wanted to show their support for its introduction and in support of its passage.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Justice. Any questions from senators?
Thank you.
Okay, we will proceed to the final piece of legislation on the docket. It's Bill number 126 dash 33, and it's relative to authorizing government of Guam employees to join the volunteer deputy marshal reserve program. And, Mr. Chief Justice, I, thank you, Mr. Chief-
I'm dressed like a probation officer. Look at this. Does this show support, or what?
Mr. Chief Justice or Mr. Tenorio?
That was good.
On Bill number 126.
Just quickly, Bill 126 dash 33, again, this was something I touched on in my state of the judiciary, is our volunteer deputy marshal reserve program. And one of the impediments to recruiting for the program is that it doesn't authorize, unlike the reserve program for the Department of Public Safety, the police department authorized government of Guam employees to join this reserve program. And we think that, you know, opening that up, and I don't understand the rationale for wanting to exclude necessarily government of Guam employees from joining the volunteer deputy reserve marshal program, but we think by opening up and removing that restriction, as is currently authorized for the police department, will enable us to look at a bigger pool of potential recruits and make the program more successful. And our chief marshal is here to discuss the testimony in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Justice. Please identify-
Good morning, Mr. Chair and senators. My name is Edward Tovis. I'm the marshal of the Courts of the Judiciary of Guam. The current law right now prohibits the full-time employees from other government, other government of Guam agencies to be eligible for the marshal's reserve program. I feel that that's unfair compared to other government of Guam employees not being restricted to become police reserves. The judiciary would certainly, the people of Guam actually would benefit from tapping on the talent and the experience that come from other law enforcement agencies in government of Guam to become marshal's reserves. It'll sure add to our operations as far as efficiency is concerned, and it'll benefit the entire, entire people of Guam, actually.
Thank you very much, Chief Marshal Tovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to let you know what I think our vision, our working vision is for this program. The first one, of course, was removing the prohibition. The way we see it is, I think what we're looking at is, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we're looking at maybe 12 reservists to restart this program. And I think the prohibition, I don't, I'm still researching it. It looks like it may have been advocated at the time by the Superior Court to restrict that. But really, you know, there's a lot of inner workings or coordination, I think, that is very positive, when all of the law enforcement entities are able to do joint things. And right now, I would, I tell you, I have about five probation officers and marshals that are in the police reserve. I used to have two in the airport police reserve, but they're all at the Guam Police, you know, are able to get some training and able to do some field operations when necessary. What I'm looking at is having a combination, removing the restriction, we'll have an open call, but it's my intention to get experienced and maybe some of the younger ones that are just graduating from basic law enforcement academy that don't have the kind of work experience that is necessary for them to even break into law enforcement. I think some of the, I've heard some of the critiques from the legislature into the various agencies, that, you know, it is kind of hard to break in. And meanwhile, every year, there's about 30 people that are graduating from Guam Community College Basic Law Enforcement Academy. In fact, Captain Trulayu, who is head of our training division, is the cadre for, I think for the last three years, along with police officers and customs officers, you know, to really try and give these students an integrated learning about the law enforcement culture and the various things that are required of them. So I think that having the, removing the restriction will allow us to take a look at maybe getting some of those that are jointly trained with us to help in specialized field operations. But for the bulk of it, really, I'm looking at using this as a way to, as part of our overtime strategy. You know, we always have weekend magistrate, there's always, every Saturday, the court will always be in session. And if it's on a three-day holiday, it could be twice. And so, part of that is to approach it. We've managed to be, I think, the least of the law enforcement officers for overtime consumption this year. You know, I still have about $100,000, I just asked for a number, that has been accumulated in comm time that we're going to try and make sure everybody takes within the period of time. But it just kind of grows to show that with at least some of this flexibility and with the stipend that will come in, and really, the, having the opportunity to work under experienced officers. In fact, one of our captains, Ted Pudua, who's retired, I'm asking, I've asked him to return as a reservist, and that also might be something that we'll be looking at for the law enforcement officers that do retire but still want to work a little. They still have to meet the post requirements. We've embraced post. I think we've been very strategic and very, I guess, ambitious and proactive. We just had last weekend our second diagnostic test. We're going to have two more this year. The next year, we'll do it monthly as we get to the mandatory date and give everybody an opportunity to really respond well. And then, I didn't mention in the probation side, but we have established an excellent working partnership with GCC to make sure that if there are any gaps in the training, including, by the way, all of our military guardsmen and reservists who are in, making sure that they have a process now to go ahead and review all of the military training they have, translate that into civilian training, and make sure that we provide for any gaps there. And so, I mean, my goal is, including with the marshal reserve that we hope to start in October 1st, you know, we have a very high expectation and a high goal for full compliance with post by the time the deadline comes. And the same standard will be applied to the marshal reservists.
As Josh mentioned, I mean, you know, besides the importance of complimenting the work that our marshals do, this is really a cost-saving measure for the court to be able to look at the reservists as opposed to overtime for our uniformed officers. And it's a way that we feel we can reduce the amount that's being spent on overtime and actually provide a savings to the government as a result of utilizing the reservists. But we do need the restriction removed on government employees for all the reasons we've already mentioned. And I think there's, there's good symmetry when we work with the police department and allow some of their full-time employees to be able to come and work as marshal reservists that can't be duplicated, and this prohibition really prevents that.
Thank you very much, Chief Justice Torres and Mr. Tenorio. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chief Justice, last week, the governor signed a piece of legislation that we passed here to allow for the chief of police to select COFA citizens to serve as volunteer reservists. Would you have any objection to my including that in this legislation?
Absolutely not. We already actually have COFA citizens serving existingly.
Yeah, we have one marshal, full-time. There is, but I think we would welcome the, I think, what I see is that's reflective of a priority of the government to make sure the law enforcement is responsive or reflective of our communities. But yes, I would, we would welcome it.
Actually, wholeheartedly endorse that.
Thank you. The other thing, I, this morning, I was listening to Chief Nicholas on the radio, and he, the GFD has the authority to establish a volunteer reserve group, but he said he has not established his because he doesn't have the funding for it. Have you provided for this in your, in your current budget?
Yes, in our budget submission, there's $65,000 that we've dedicated for the marshal reserve program. And that is based on having 12 reservists. That could, that's, it could expand if we choose to expand those numbers, or we just move it internally from personnel, but our budget request includes that, yes.
Do you already have rules and regulations as to when they get compensated? Because I know in the police department, they have to have 42 hours.
I'll take care of it.
And I'm just wondering if-
We do. What we'll do is, we'll submit to the chair, the rules were promulgated maybe more than a decade ago. And I just need to ask, was it ever, did you have a reserve program before?
No.
So they were bringing up to the point to get it done, but it just never got implemented. But we have, we've reviewed the rules extensively. We're happy with them. We believe it can work within the framework, and we'll submit it.
And it's a special peeve of mine, and I'm sure that the chairman suffers it with me, that these volunteers, please, make sure they get paid on a timely basis. I really think it's-
You have our commitment. We will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Tonya?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question on the, you know, you were talking about the hours. Is there a minimum hours that the volunteer is?
I believe that the minimum is 40 a month.
Forty a month?
Forty-four? Forty-two hours a month.
Forty-two hours a month?
Yes.
Is the marshal division a 24/7 division?
It's not, but it operates six days a week.
So how would an individual- So how would an individual then be able to make the 42 hours every month?
It could be that on the weekend duty is about maybe five hours, five to six hours every day. And then there's some judges that are ending court at seven or eight o'clock. And so we would factor that into kind of the shift work. So it could be that we bring somebody in from four to eight for five days a week. Depends on what the, their work schedules are for their dominant jobs, but we're confident that they'll be able to meet that. There's also field work.
Yeah, oftentimes, they'll execute warrants in the evening.
The protective orders, I think, that's something that, to support the domestic violence court. Those are, those are the areas, I could tell you the areas where we're doing the overtime. It's the weekend magistrates, it's the protective orders at the end of the day coming out of the domestic violence court. And then when there's warrants, bench warrants, or warrants of arrest actually, that are issued at the end of the day by the criminal trial judges, it's usually that, that, you know, the urgent ones that we end up, and I forget, she just reminded, also Erica's house. We have Erica's house operation seven days a week. So there are marshals on Sundays there also.
We don't think there'll be any problem with that compliment to getting them to make their hours.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Toniana. Chief Justice and Chief Marshal Tovis, Mr. Tenorio, and Captain Trelawney, thank you very much for joining us this morning. This concludes the committee's agenda this morning. As was mentioned a little earlier, the committee will continue to receive written testimony for the subsequent 10 days from this hearing date and then the committee report will be closed thereafter. So thank you very much again.
Thank you, senators, for your indulgence.
Thank you.